We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. For those of you who are seniors that are here for your class, I understand the closer you come to the front, the more credit you get for being here, so you might want to move up and get your grades a little higher. Not moving. Oh, oh, that's not good. Mr. Keegan and Mr. Nefew are excused. Mr. Subota is excused. Ms. McDonald is excused. So we are down to, down to five. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember Dominic Albanese, a graduate of the district, Donna Marie Ralph, a graduate of the district, Sheila Han, an employee of the district, Cynthia A. Thompson, a graduate of the district, Dr. James Arthur, a former employee of the district, and Donna Cooney, a retired employee of the district. Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a presentation on the KWS Bear Road Elementary School Capitol Project. Mr. Ward, are you going to bring folks up and introduce? Thank you. I'm gonna bring that over a little closer. We can, we can see-
So, good evening. As Mr. Schuster said, we're gonna provide you an update on Bear Road's renovation project. With me tonight with Kick from Kane King is Paul Johnston, Dustin Erlich, and Casey Redman.
Great. Thanks for giving us some time to present this. This is always awkward here. I'm just gonna move in front of the table here. We'll, we've got some renderings here, so we'll try to situate these so that you can see what's going on, and if we have to, we'll sort of move back and forth and up and down the line here. So, we're excited to show you our progress on the project. It's, everything we're showing you is in line with the floor plans and the concepts that we've talked about all the way through the project. So, again, we're, we're designing a building that both meets the, the needs of the teachers today, but provides that, that flexibility and adaptability of spaces, both for experimenting with, with different teaching pedagogies and philosophies, both now and hopefully well into the future. So, we're excited where we're at, and we feel like there's a good consensus throughout the administration, all the way through the teachers. They've been involved all the way through, as we've recited to you a bunch of times. This is probably my fourth time here talking about this building. So, with that, let's get right into the, the fun rendering, so we can finally see past floor plans, what, what it all really means here. So, I'm gonna hand this off to Dustin.
Thank you. So, one of the, the big things that we've talked about since the beginning was separating the bus traffic from the parent drop-off area, kind of prevent any potential accidents and things like that. So, this is from the Bear Road side of Bear Road Elementary. So, this would be the parent drop-off area. The buses go around the other side with a new drive, which would during the day be gated off. So, really, this is the main entrance during the day. So, any visitors that come by, parents need to grab their kids. They would come in through here. The main entrance is right directly off of that, so there's a lot of windows there, so they can see who's coming in, a lot of visibility. Both ends have secure vestibules, and then lobby itself is also a secure spot as well. The whole building is partitioned off and all that with all the, you know, the current security measures. One of the goals here was to, besides put the main office up front, so they have the visibility and security they don't have now, was to create a welcoming entrance as well. So, trying to raise the roof a little bit and make it more welcoming, airy, open, a little less intimidating for the kids. So, this is, thank you, Dana. This is basically looking back from the inside of the lobby, back towards the end, the end you're looking at there. So, this end over here is where the, the main entrance is and that vestibule I was talking about. You can see, we're trying to bring in some materials that are not only durable, but also a little warmer. So, we're trying not to do what has been done a lot in the past with tile and things like that, that are very cold institutional feeling. But where we can, especially up high, use wood, so that's a structural wood deck, but it brings that warmth and it's a little more welcoming, and we're gonna light it and really warm up the space. Okay.
So, this is an example of one of the scenarios where we, in second grade, I believe, where there are, we have an opportunity to open up the wall between the classrooms. So, you have that flexibility of teaching and some co-teaching potentially going on there. Another element of the classrooms, which every classroom will have, is a window seat for students, and because they're so little, they, multiple students can sit here, or a couple of students and a teacher. So, you can kind of pull those kids, but still be within the classroom and have some, you know, parallel teaching going on. They're visible from the exterior as they're kind of articulated on the, the fenestration of the, the windows. They're pulled out. They're at an angle. You're getting this kind of colored soffit from the exterior. You'll see that a little bit later in the exterior renderings. We've, have our cubbies inside, internal to the classroom, so it keeps the hallways nice and clean and, and not chaotic in the morning and afternoon. So, they're actually gonna be within the classrooms. They're cut off here, but they would kind of be right at the edge on the, the corridor wall. And then, within the classroom, we have some flooring material that will stand up to, to snow and boots and things like that, and then we providing carpet in, in the, in these areas, and it really just warms it all up. And it makes it like a fun, warm, airy space to be. So, this is looking into the fourth grade section, where we have a little bit more opportunity to open things up. This is in the classroom. This here is one of the classrooms. This space is kind of group teaching area. It's open lab space, collaborative space. We provided some casework with a sink for any kind of wet project things that might be going on. Again, bringing in that warmth with the wood, fun colors, and tons of natural light as much as possible. This area here is a group room, a quiet room. It'll be, provide shades for when it needs to be private. Again, just kind of pulling in as much natural light as possible into the space.
So, the south side of the building, which is where the fourth grade area is, we're adding a little square footage there, so that we can fit the rooms that we need to. So, this is showing that area. You can see some of those window seats Cassie mentioned popping out there. So, this really pushes out to the edge of that wetlands, which solves a couple of problems, actually. There's an issue with people walking through there, a security problem, other things that the kids hear when the windows are open. So, this actually builds it right to the edge of the wetlands, so we won't have that issue anymore. We also have these balconies coming off, and they're talking about as like flexible teaching spaces, outdoor teaching areas. We have some of those in the courtyard, and these rooms have them off the back of the building as well. But they're up off the ground, so you can't access them from down below. And then, we've got other teaching opportunities. There's one in the front, as well as back here, where the, the roof feeds a rain garden, so it could be like a, a science instructional area, potentially. We're using a, you know, simple but durable material palette. We've got brick and fiber cement panels, things that are pretty much indestructible. They're not trendy materials. They've been around for a long time. Questions?
I have a question. When we first started this venture, we were fortunate enough to go on a tour of Pine Grove Middle School to see the renovations that they did. And they did have some materials that were used initially that did not work out, flooring that had to be replaced, and I just want to make sure we're using that lessons learned to make- Okay.
Yeah, and so their, their flooring issues were actually manufacturer's problem, not necessarily the product itself.
So, it's still a good point, though. Obviously, that was, that was a project in our office-
Issues with the desk furniture, things like that, too.
Right, right. So, we definitely, every project, there, there's something, there's at least something, one thing, if not many things, that, that we learn.
Right.
Whether it's through materials that are working, manufacturers that are standing behind their products, or, you know, just how, how occupants are using the building in the end, you know, once they really move in. So, we loved going back to those buildings and then seeing what we can, what we can learn, how, how it's being used, that's what creative way they're using it that we didn't necessarily intend. So-
And we learned some things from Smith Road. We have the porcelain tile, and always, that's something we have nowhere in this building. The rubber flooring that we're proposing, we've had in transportation since we arrived here for that, and it's been in some other districts for years, so-
Right.
We tried to try and use the turpentine, we use all the time.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
The angled roof line there. I mean, we have something similar at Gillette. Is that gonna handle the weight of the snow that we get? If we get a lot, large amount of snow, I mean, how much weight is this rated for? Because there's gonna be a lot of pressure in the middle area, isn't there?
Right. No, that's an excellent point. And so, that's something very specific that we have our structural engineering designing to, since it's, it's a new area. So, there, there are codes and snow loads, et cetera, and so we will, we will meet, or as they see fit, exceed, even exceed, if necessary, those codes. I mean, obviously, you've had, this district has, has had a roof failure in its, in its past, and so the codes have changed to address that. And so, now, the codes specifically talk about roof, snowdrift, and so when you have, you know, a higher roof next to a lower roof, or, or a protected area, it, the code thinks a lot more now and expects us to design to address those snow loads. And so, and it actually, it, we reinforce roofs in areas that you wouldn't even expect. So, this is one where you might, you might think that there'll be a lot, a lot of it, but it's, it's actually other, other areas, both around this roof, around your gym and your cafeteria, some of those other high roofs that create actually even worse snow loading conditions. And so, we will be updating or modifying the, the existing roof structure in some of those areas, areas where we're not necessarily already taking the roof down.
So, you mentioned that there was drainage that goes to a, a rain yard. Is there any other way that the, the water drains on there, because we get large amounts of rain or lots of melting at, you know, large amount of time? Is there any other drainage besides that? Does it all come out at one point? I mean, where's the-
Right, yeah. So, at the moment, that is, that is the plan, and there's, there's a pretty extensive stormwater drainage system being designed around the building, and it will include some underground water storage. And so, the, the water that comes off the roof or off of any hard surface, even the paving on the site, we need to properly manage and actually contain on-site for 24 hours before it's released elsewhere. And so, those, the guidelines, again, for that are usually pretty strict, and so we probably are designing to, I'd have to ask our, our landscape architect, but we're probably designing to, you know, a 50- or 100-year storm. So, I, John, you-
Typically a fire.
Yeah.
So, so that- This can't be blocked. So, you take a sheet of paper, you pull it down, it's on the line.
Yeah.
Right. This is actually a safer roof.
So, you're not doing any piping. You're doing just, it's all coming off that one.
Right. We've gone on roofs in the past, and, and I've stepped out of, out of roof hatches into water that's been almost to my knees. You think about the, you know, eight pounds a gallon of water and across the giant, I mean, so that's really not safe. This, there's always a way for it to come off this roof.
Right, and you've got, you know, it's kind of, you gotta look at the roof as sections. So, you have, some have roof drains, some this is gonna drain to there. It all doesn't drain to one spot, so you have a variety of drainage systems up there.
Correct.
My only other question is, you had some rooms that were completely glassed in. Did you take into, you, I'm, you probably did. I'm just asking, because I don't know.
No, it's great. We want to explain all this, so thanks for asking.
Are the, um, you got, you got a room completely enclosed by windows. You want a lot of natural light. I, I agree with that. What about the heat end of it? If the sun is hitting that in the middle of the afternoon, it's going to be-
Yeah, great question.
More sunlight than we need.
Yes. Now, great question. One of my favorite examples of, of how we solve this and where technology has really helped us is at Smith Road in a similar condition at the end of that courtyard. It used to be all glass, and I just remember going through that hallway, and, and it was, you know, in the winter, I mean, in summer, when, when Cassie and I were doing fieldwork, and you literally sweat pouring down your head just by walking down that hallway, right?
Yeah.
So, as soon as we replace the glass in there, glass technology has gone leaps and bounds. Even since Smith Road, it's a whole new generation of glazing. And so, we spent a lot of time looking at what's called the solar heat gain. It's the ability of that window to block the, the heat that, the, of the ray, you know, the sun rays that are, that are coming through. So, through that, we, we can really drive that, we can maintain the glass and, and the benefits of glass, which is the visibility, natural light. You know, there's plenty of studies that talk about the impact of, of natural light on, on people's, you know, not only test scores, but just how people feel. So, anyway, so it's, it's sort of the best of both worlds. Glass has really done some great stuff. At the same time, because we're pursuing a net-zero energy building, we have to be very cognizant of our energy use. And so, we have spent a lot of time thinking about where do we want glass and where is it important? And so, we, we definitely feel like we've found a nice middle spot where we're balancing all of those things. Our engineers aren't yelling at us because we have huge expanses of, of curtain wall glazing everywhere. And at the same time, we, we're literally going to glass now. That's, you've probably heard of triple glaze.
Yeah.
But we're, we're triple glazed, and even the frames are, because in windows, the weak point is actually the, the frame. It's usually the, the spot where it's the, the, the least, where it's, it's the worst thermal performance. So, we're, we're doing research into different types of frames. We're looking at wood, at what's called UPVC, and even better thermally broken aluminum frames and what you've experienced in the past. So, that, it's just a more comfortable, more comfortable interior environment.
Okay, so conversely, that dealing with frigid temperatures is gonna do the same thing, or-
Absolutely.
How does that-
Yeah, so the triple glazing, definitely, the performance of that glass, it starts to almost act as well as a solid wall. It's really amazing stuff. And so, but even so, with that said, we're, we're working with our engineers to make sure that you're not gonna feel sort of that, that drafty space near a window or anything. So, we do still have fin tube radiation around the perimeter. So, again, our goal is to not have those hot and cold spots within the room. We're doing displacement ventilation again, similar to Smith Road, which is just an amazing system. You don't feel the drafts from the air blowing through. It's a very slow-moving ventilation system, and a very stable one. So, the rooms will stay at a, you know, whatever the set point is.
Are the heat ventilation at Smith Road there?
Are you gonna ask me about the barrels? You have to. I'm glad you brought that up.
Going to be, I'm here. I didn't see them in the picture.
I think it shows up- I think it shows up in one of these renderings, actually. No, no. So, that was a huge improvement over, Smith Road, we didn't think we were gonna be able to knock all the walls down. So, we had to do something that was applied to the surface.
Okay.
Lessons learned in the end. We realized at Smith Road, you couldn't save all those walls, and the ship had already sailed on that mechanical system. But we know today, again, lessons learned from Smith Road, we know that we'll be removing all walls and that we can literally build those, it's those same louvers, still that perforated metal surface. But, I mean, you can see it's, it's flat, and it's built into the casework that's already gonna be below the windows. So, again, a, a great, great opportunity to integrate those systems into the architecture and have it all blend together even better. And Mary, when you were at ESM, that's exactly what you saw there for their heating system in their classrooms.
Thank you.
Sure. Great questions.
I just have one more. I'm just still worried about the bus traffic on that side. We don't have a picture of that.
So, can you just further clarify?
I'm just, is there enough room? I'm just worried about space.
Oh, the space? Okay, okay. So, we-
Like, how is it going, how are they gonna come in and turn around?
Yeah, so we know how many buses you have, so we have, we have parking for all the buses. They will, they'll, they'll come in a dedicated entrance. They have, they park in sort of Chevron angled style. You're able to get all your buses parked, unlike even what I witnessed this morning, where they're almost double stacking as they come in, because too many are arriving at the same time. And then, there's ample space for them to swing and go right back out, that same exit. So, it truly is isolating the buses and the bus drop-off from what's happening with the parents. It allows us to streamline what happens with the parents and make that cleaner as well, so that, again, they are doing the exact same thing, parking at a curb, and a curb that is a lot more length, just anticipating that more and more parents may be doing this in the future. So, you sort of have some extra curb built in. And again, they're not abandoned. What, again, we were just there this morning. There was a, literally a car parking a bunch of other people in, and there was no one in the car, so they just crash landed there and entered in. So, I think we're gonna clean up a lot of safety issues there. Again, that, so then that loop can be, there'll be a gate there, so the gate can be closed during normal hours. So, you won't have anyone driving. They won't be able to drive through there, because our goal is to take that big paved area where the buses are looping around, take that area and have it usable for, for PE or, or any other time that's, you know, teachers want to bring kids outside. They can do four-square or whatever, whatever the cool game is today. Say that again?
Like Cisro, like you got the- To visualize it, take Smith Road's bus minus the island in the middle. Just push that together, and that's what Bear's gonna look like on a sign. So, the playground gets pushed out into the track area. And when the gates close, they'll have some basketball hoops and four-square and those kind of things.
Yeah.
Probably pickleball, pickleballs.
Pickleball, awesome.
No idea what that is.
Sounds awesome. I have no idea what it is.
There're pickles along.
Okay, anybody else?
Not an Olympic sport yet.
Not yet. Mike?
Yeah, it will be.
Thank you very, we're very-
I just want to thank all of you for being-
It's a really exciting project.
I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for your flexibility in listening to feedback that we've given along the way, and also to let the, the board and the community know. These folks started their day almost 12 hours ago presenting the same information to the staff at Bear Road this morning, and I think the staff was very receptive. They, they looked at these, and they're really excited, I think, about this project moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We want them to be happy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the 2017-18 Consolidated Federal Grants. Ms. Wilczynski.
Ready? All right. So, this is the Consolidated Federal Grant, which is Title I and Title II-A of what we apply for each year. And this year, the same schools as last year are identified as Title I schools. Title I schools are determined by the free and reduced, free and reduced lunch rate. So, you can see over the years that we've increased in most of these places or stayed steady. Main Street was added last year for the first time, along with Allen Road, and the other four buildings are on the verge of also being Title I schools as well. This is what our Title I funding supports in the building, so when you see that next to it, those are all of our AIS providers, academic intervention service providers, and also response to intervention, which is a K4 mandate, state mandate. So, these are, this is how many reading and math specialists the grant supports, and how many are in each of the buildings. We're very fortunate to have this grant, so that we have the funding to do this. Title I this year, the expenditures, I don't know if that's- Title I this year, the expenditures, I don't know if that's me or, sorry.
I don't know where that's coming from.
This is how we budgeted. That is our total Title I grant. The funding that we received from the federal government was the $1,358,883. So we broke it into our professional salaries, which were the slide before this of how many AIS providers we have and who is under there. Alicia Pezzuto and myself are also under Title I funding. Purchased services would be anybody who, if we have consultants, so for instance, right now, we have HMH, which is Hooten, Mifflin, Harcourt, who comes in and does work for us, or any consultants, Donna Ryder, Julie Costin. Those kinds of services come out of Title I. Supplies and materials, this helps our AIS providers with the programming that they do within the buildings with our students. And then obviously, the benefits and indirect costs of when we do professional salaries. The set-asides are mandates by the federal government that have to be put aside for the following reasons. You have to have a certain amount for professional development opportunities for our staff, which we do most of our literacy work through. We do our SEL work through. We're doing the Julie Costin inclusion work. A lot of it comes out of that money. But we also use the transferability option, which is you can move money from Title II-A to Title I to fund staff. And that came into effect a couple of years ago. We do use that to increase our support within the buildings. You also have to set aside money for homeless students and for parent involvement. Remember, all of those options for parent involvement also include the parochial buildings that we're responsible for. This gives you a nice list of what we are supporting through Title I funding and Title II funding. And so those are many of our, as you know, the Vision 2020 has outlined our focus areas. And that's, this is what provides us the support to buy materials or buy consultants. And again, the parochial schools also get their percentage of our funds as well. Title II-A is to make sure that all of our teachers and principals are highly qualified. And all of them are. And then this lists the amount that we received from the federal government in Title II-A for the year. And again, as you can see, the majority of it goes toward our professional salaries and then benefits. This also, again, goes for making sure that the parochials have AIS providers as well. And then we share in giving them supplies and materials. And this helps us with supplies and materials in all of our focus areas. Are there any questions?
Okay.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm trying to figure it out, looking at populations. The, I just expected to see a correlation between the Title I chart and the poverty index pieces there and the AIS staffing, but I, it didn't seem to make sense to me. Was, is there a population differences? For example, on the next slide, when I, when I see five, and he said this is for the grant, from the grant?
Correct.
Five at Gillette and only three at Roxborough, yet I'm looking at the free and reduced lunch at Roxborough. It didn't, it confused me. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. That's a really good question. These are all of our schools listed here, as you can see, outside of Main Street, which we don't have AIS providers. For instance, Cicero, Lake Shore, Gillette, and the high school are not Title. So that's the staffing we have that comes out of the general fund. But Roxborough, Allen, Bear, et cetera, are the ones that come out of Title I funding. So we still staff as we always have. We've taken a look at staffing it differently, but those that are Title buildings, so Allen, Bear, Roxell, Rox Middle, Smith Road, and the junior high school and Main Street, but again, Main Street doesn't have AIS providers, they are Title. Those would be out of the grant. The other, this is just giving you an overall of how many AIS providers we have in the district. That's a really good question. We probably should break that out for next year. Any other questions?
Thank you, Don.
All right.
Next items on the agenda, routine action items. 3A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of October 16, 2017. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. D, consideration of classification and placement of students in home instruction programs as recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. And E, acknowledgement of business office reports for July 2017 and August 2017. Is there a motion to take and approve 3, A, B, C, D, and E as a group? Mr. Maurizio, Ms. Gallin, all in favor? Carry it. Comments from the audience? We have one speaker who would like to address the issue of a pool. And I'm going to ask the superintendent to comment first before we bring the speaker up.
So I'm pleased to inform the community this evening that this, during this past week, Mr. Schuster, Mr. Keegan, and I met with someone that we believe will be a good facilitator for a pool study committee. And at the next Board of Education meeting on November 20th, we will be asking the board to pass a resolution hiring this individual as a consultant to facilitate the study, as well as to have the board establish a study committee to take a look at options for moving forward with the pool conversation that would provide a pool for our students, student athletes to use. The plan is, following that meeting, of course, assuming that the board goes along with this recommendation, would be for a letter to go out from me the following day. It would be advertised through an e-blast, but also specifically delivered via email to the numerous people who have written to us recently about support for a swimming pool. And that letter will talk about people who are interested in applying to serve on this study committee. So more information to follow, but we're pleased that we're going to be able to move forward with this conversation.
Thank you. So we have Jean Burnett, who would like to speak about the pool. Come on up, Jean. I'd ask you, Jean, to take this microphone here, please. Again, remember the three-minute limit, so. Good, Connie? You set? Okay.
I'll sit. It's easier. Thank you very much for that update. We greatly appreciate that. And that was one of the things that we were anxious about hearing about. I was reviewing the minutes and there was a few things that I was looking at. And one of the things is that we do need a school pool, not a community pool. That's something that's really important because all the athletes and everything else will be able to use it. And if it's, you know, part of our school, it's going to be much easier for them to be able to use that facility. And we're not looking for a large Olympic facility, although it would be wonderful for them to use. But we only need a six-to-eight lane pool with a one-meter diving board for the swimming and diving teams. My daughter and son have been swimming for seven years competitively. And we've been to many different facilities in the area, Liverpool being one of them with a six-lane pool and a diving board, and West Tennessee, which is a wonderful facility. The air quality is great in there. The parents are very proud of this facility. The acoustics are really nice and so is the pool. And again, that's a six-lane pool with a diving board, a one-meter diving board. It, you know, it's for the, it would be for all the sports teams. They would strengthen every athlete, whether they're a swimmer or not. And the bonus would be that the community could use it. And it would bring revenue to the district. And the swimming and diving team, you know, had their sectionals this weekend. I'm not sure if all of you are aware of it, but I'm sure many of you are aware. And they did very well this weekend. We have one of our diver, or not divers, but swimmers, Brooke Fede, who got a state time on Sunday with a 10805. And she also broke her own school record, again, with the IM swim with a 21503. So those are great accomplishments that I think that I wanted everybody to be aware of. And the thing, if we do have a school pool, this is the area that you can display, recognize, and memorialize all these statistics. Every pool facility that my husband and I go to, that's the one thing that we read about. It's up on a big board in that pool facility with the pool records and each male and female record that's out of that school facility. And it's interesting to see because our, like I said, our kids do swim for the Liverpool Jets offseason. And we get to see how some of these other schools that do swim with the Jets, some of those swimmers, their status, their stats are up there as pool record breakers. So that would be something that would be really, really nice to be able to memorialize these athletes in that pool facility. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I just want to ask the audience in the back, we can hear you up here, so we'd appreciate if you'd hold that down. Thank you. 5A, Board Committee reports comments. Mary, policy?
Our policy committee meets once a month, and we met last Monday on October 30th. And we welcomed, we have a new student rep, Alex Nobles. He's a sophomore and we're very excited that he's joining our committee. We also welcome back our other student rep, Lydia Herter. She's a senior this year. It's her second year on the committee. We had a very busy meeting, very productive. We reviewed 18 policies. 11 we are recommending to be re-adopted without change on tonight's agenda. Four were recommending amend and re-adopt, and they have small updates, some language changes, title changes. And the four we tabled for further discussion. And our next meeting is November 27th. And I also want to say congratulations to the CNS varsity football team. And I know Annette's going to have comments about that.
Thank you, Mary. Paul, anything on legislative?
No, the Legislative Committee has not met since the last board meeting, but we meet on Monday at 5:00.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else with anything? Jackie?
I attended the Aladaga Madison School Board Association meeting.
Excellent.
Notes are forthcoming to you real soon. They're moving facilities as of January 1st to the Wide Waters Parkway area. They're working with another organization to share the facility. And they've got some really interesting initiatives that I think we'll be able to utilize in, for our kids, so.
Super.
More is coming.
Are you enjoying your term of office there?
Uh...
Now, maybe I don't want to always do that one.
I don't like bunch-time meetings. I don't like bunch-time meetings because I'm eating and talking at the same time. It's just not a good thing. So, anyway.
But we appreciate you serving on that, so thank you. Anybody else with anything? Okay, superintendent's comments. Annette?
So we have a lot to celebrate. And Mr. Harrington next to me just asked me if I was going to talk about the holiday tree. He actually watched on Friday when the city came and went through quite a production, I understand, to take the tree down and relocate the holiday tree that was donated from the school district, from the high school property to Clinton Square downtown. So as you drive through downtown or attend the tree lighting, you'll get a special kick out of knowing that that was our tree. And thank you, Mr. Harrington, for being there on Friday. A lot to celebrate, and some of you already mentioned a couple of things. I had also planned to congratulate Brooke Fende, Section III winner of the 100-yard breaststroke. She's the champion for that, so excellent for her. I definitely need to congratulate the CNS marching band once again. Undefeated season, winning the large school, two-class 2017 New York State Field Band Competition. They're New York State champs two years in a row. And this past weekend, on top of that, they won Class V National Championship in Allentown, Pennsylvania. So that's huge. And we look forward to not this Thanksgiving, but next Thanksgiving, seeing them in the Macy's Day Thanksgiving Parade. I definitely have to congratulate the CNS varsity football team. They made school history at the Dome Saturday evening, capturing the Section III championship title. This is a huge, huge accomplishment for CNS. They beat Balensville 56 to 21. It was a very exciting game. And we wish them well as they move on to state playoffs this coming weekend. I also want to mention, when you came in this evening, you may have seen the video that was playing that captured the highlights of our football team from the event Saturday evening. And I want to thank high school student Jacob Lacks for putting that together, a very talented young man. We appreciate that. And I also want to thank the fire departments and police departments in the area that escorted our football team and cheerleaders back Saturday evening all the way up Route 11 through Cicero to the high school. It was quite, quite an ordeal and something to see. And last but not least, we wish the boys' varsity volleyball team well tomorrow evening. They will be playing at the high school at 8:00 with the hopes of taking the sectional title for the third year in a row. So good luck to them. I think that's it.
There you go. I'm going to go back to Board Committee and ask Mike to talk about the events of Saturday evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly state, on Saturday evening, the North Syracuse Education Foundation held their annual gala at Lake Shore Yacht and Country Club. There were several people from the community, from the school, from all those who support education. And I just want to thank everybody who goes out and supports that cause because there's so much that we can do here because of that. So I just thank everybody who showed their support.
Very good time. Thank you, Mike. Six discussion action items. 6A, resolution authorizing settlement of impartial hearing. B, resolution to create six FTE teaching assistants. C, acknowledgement of gifts. The Smith Road PTO has funded the construction of the following assets to the North Syracuse Central School District for the use and enjoyment of the district and Smith Road Elementary School community. These assets are located at 5959 Smith Road. The total value of the gift is $55,497.2. There's one wooden outdoor pavilion, one eight-foot-wide quarter-mile asphalt walking track, one, I think that's four-foot wide by 40-foot engraved paper sidewalk, maybe it's four inches, and one 24-inch wide by 36-inch-high three-standing Smith Road community track sign. And secondly, Industry Standard USA donated to the North Syracuse School, Syracuse, no, North Syracuse Central School, $1,000 to be used specifically for field trips by Linda Dwyer's business classes. D, designated gift or the purchase of the new scoreboard at the Michael J. Bregman Stadium. If it comes up here, Furon and Son has donated $3,000 for the scoreboard sponsorship contract. And E, surplus of non-marketable and marketable equipment. So it's a resolution to declare that group of stuff non, to be disposed of and marketable surplus to be auctioned off. At this point, I want to take 6, A, B, C, D, and E as a group. Motion to approve such. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Owens, all in favor?
Question first.
Question, Mike.
Yeah, sorry. Do we, was the gifts, I think it's awesome that we got those gifts for Smith Road. Was that planned or was that kind of spontaneous? It was planned.
Now we've got all these policies that Ms. Gallin referred to. F, policy for-
Did we vote?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, we did. I thought we did. No? Okay, Connie said, okay, all in favor. All right, there we go. Now we go. there we go. Now we go. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Okay, F, policy 1420, complaints about curriculum instruction materials. That will amend and re-adopt. G, 4326, students with limited English proficiency amend and re-adopt. H, 4720, student assessment and reporting amend and re-adopt. I, 5252, extra classroom activity funds amend and re-adopt. And J is that list of, I believe, eight policies. It would take a little, to strictly re-adopt, should no amendment there. So, motion to take F, G, H, I, and J as a group, Ms. Scanlon? Second, Mr. Leon? All in favor? Thank you. Retirements on the personnel agenda. We have Dale Higley, bus driver retiring with 33 years of service, and James Ball retiring with 13 years of service. So, we acknowledge those two retirements. Personnel report. 7A instructional, 7B support staff. Are there any questions that need to be addressed prior to approving those? No? Okay, a motion to approve 7A and B? It's Mr. Leon and Mr. Fravalia. All in favor? D, the motion for executive session. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on four legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of three individuals with action to follow on two legal matters. Such a motion. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Off we go to executive session, 749. All of you seniors, come on up. We'll sign your forms for you.
Oh, it's a stampede.
Bring them on up.
How are you?
Who we got?
I like the flowers.
Joey.
There you go. Thank you.